All right, good evening, everybody. Before we get started with our regular business meeting tonight, we have a public hearing, an ordinance 212, relates to the fiscal year 2014 budget. So if you're emotional, open the public hearing.
I make a motion to approve the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion on the public hearing is open. Anybody from the community like to speak on the budget? Going once, going twice? Okay. We hear no comments from the community. We hear a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
You know, second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, so we'll open with our general business meeting here. Welcome to the Manchester Town Council Meeting, May 14, 2013. First order of business is approval of two sets of minutes. The minutes for the March meeting were not completed and ready for review as of the April meeting, so we'll start with approval of the March 2013 minutes.
I recommend actually approve the March 12, 2013 minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then, secondly, March, April, rather, April 9, 2013 minutes. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the April 9, 2013 minutes.
I second that.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, receipt of the April 2013 treasure report. I'll just have a copy in front of you. Motion to receive the treasures report for last month.
I make a motion to accept the April 2013 treasure report.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on to the mayor's report. Couple of items here. One, the giving update on the Charlotte Colette Scholarship. The open period has closed. I believe it was last week. Don't quote me on the day, but we received 13 applicants, give or take. Scholarship committee this year carrying over from last year is me, Councilman Tammy Black, Councilman Todd Benner, same as last year. So we have those. Everybody picked those up. And I talked to Todd today, and Tammy, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about those yet. But we'll be sifting through those and have an announcement for... We'll make the announcement here next month, but we have to report that to the school here in the coming weeks. Second, you have... We received an email late today. There's an email printed out, having to pack it here, about the ethics ordinance. So for those of you that have been on the board or come to the meetings on a regular basis, you know it's been an ongoing issue for the last, I don't know, two years or so. Most recent, I guess, update we have is that we're close. Our language isn't quite tied to what it needs to be. The attorney is going to redraft it, and looks like we're going to vote on it next month. So it's something that we're going to need to... Those of us that'll be here, the remaining three, will need to catch up the new members, get them up to speed pretty quickly, because we're going to be under the gun to get this taken care of at the June 11 meeting. We do have an election coming up, May 21st. Three positions open. We have four people running, I think, right now, so please vote on May 21st here in the town. Let's see. There's somewhat of a family reunion going on here tonight, which is new. We have a former mayor, Chris DiMario, who's here to be sworn in for Board of Zoning Appeals. If you want to come up, Chris, we'll take care of this.
He says, "Chris, originally sworn in in 1999." It wasn't long time ago.
Gee, Rich. Wasn't he?
Chris DiMario. He referred to supporting the Constitution of the United States, and that would be faithful in their duty, each state of Maryland, for the Constitution of ours of our own. And I will do the best of my skill and judgment. Do you wish one particular part of the House of Representatives, execute the office supporting zone? Deals member according to the Constitution of the United States. I will. My pleasure, Mr. Riley. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'm not as much of a pro at that as Chris is yet, but I'm starting to do it like a hockey announcer. All right, finally, last word is, I do want to personally thank, on behalf of myself and the town, the three gentlemen that have been on this board for the last, I guess it's been the last four years, or eight years really, for Doug and Todd, and many, many years in a number of capacities for Dan. So thank you to each of you for your years of service and commitment to the town. And, you know, I hope that you guys won't be a stranger, and we'll be here swearing in for something like Chris in the not-too-distant future. And I believe Kelly and Steve have a special recognition for Councilman Riley, being that he's been here for more years than...
You're old.
More, more. For a lot of years.
You're old.
It is more years than I'm old.
Mr. Riley, if you could get on mic and come over to the other microphone, I'd appreciate it. Kelly? While Mr. Riley's coming down, he was telling Kelly and I just the other day that when he started working for the town, and many of you who don't know this, actually, he was clerk to the Maryland Council. He also read the water meters in town, took care of the water system in town, took care of plowing snow, and his starting salary was around $4,500 a year. He finally figured it out that he's making less now than he was back then. He's moving on to bigger and better things, I think.
I am.
Yeah.
I read the water meters. I got the tax information at the county, and filled the taxes, and collected the taxes, got my own pay. And today, nobody even trusts you if you have five people watching you. So I can tell you one thing, it's changed.
Mr. Riley has been a fantastic friend of all the employees. And it's amazing that the number of our employees that come through the door, and when Mr. Riley's here, they address him as Mr. Riley. That is respect that you have to earn. You cannot buy respect like that.
Well, on behalf of myself and Steve, everyone here, and particularly Michael, Bruce, Michelle, and Laurie and Tracy here in the front office, we respect you, but we'd really like to play around with you, too. So that will change, and we would like to thank you for everything you've done for us, because you have been involved for us. This is from...
And you're a friend of his at your desk.
Is it a bar?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank all of you. I remember working as a town employee, and I became the council. But I've never gotten any higher than when I reported in the ditching. So I'm on the same level as the employees of the town. And being around as long as I have, you know, without the employees and without this staff, you wouldn't get anything done.
Mm-hmm.
And that's true.
Yep.
And I've told the employees that, and I appreciate it, and all of them that worked while I was on the council. All of them. The employees deserve a lot of credit, too. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. I would say happy, enjoy, or happy retirement, enjoy retirement, but I know we're not letting it get away that easy.
I've been retired for 23 years.
So invite everybody to stick around after the meeting. We have a reception to honor Dan and thank both Dan and the other gentlemen that are on their way out today. That's all I have. Move on to Steve and the administrative report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and start with the April 2013 administrative report. There have been no changes in regards to the chute's expansion or the S.H.A. projects. The solar project study, CQI, will have the final study completed by the June meeting, and would like to present this to the mayor and the council. Also, they'll be meeting with staff sometime between now and the June meeting, in case we have any questions that they want to get ironed out. Mayor Warner spoke about the ethics ordinance update, the charter change. We have had conversations between Councilperson Black, Mayor Warner, and myself on that. The MEA grant. MEA has increased our grant from originally $20,000 to now $37,500 due to adjustments to the population formula that they used. Mayor Warner is in the process of signing the additional information, which will... We will meet our June 4 deadline on that. I have no change in the youth representative. Probably now that we're getting closer to the end of the school year, I will talk to Principal Clark over the summer to get that position filled when school opens back up in August and September. Under new construction, construction continues at a faster pace than expected. This fiscal year, we did budget for 15 new homes. So far, we have permitted 40. So that's something to think about as far as our build-out date getting closer. Under code enforcement, Chestnut Street apartment issues are being addressed between our staff and our town attorney. Under miscellaneous items, the intersection of Michelle Road and Bachman Road, as I reported to the council, I did receive a call from a resident on Bachman Road a few months ago. Traffic concerns are in the morning. MPD did monitor the intersection on April the 10th and 11th, and you can see between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00 a.m., 124 and 103 vehicles respectively passed through that intersection heading toward Route 27 with their average speed of 21 mile per hour. I would like the council to take a look at that intersection and see if anything, any suggestions could be brought back to me on what can be done. Under the sustainable community application, at this time, I'm recommending to the mayor to appoint a sustainable community task force. This would consist of a town council representative, a representative from planning and zoning, a representative from the merchants association, possibly a rep from a nonprofit group similar to the Lions Club or the Fire Department, a representative from the Rec Council, a landlord, and a citizen at large. I'm also recommending to the council to allow me to contract the services of diverse management and planning to assist the task force and the staff in preparing the application, as well assisting staff in researching grant opportunities for the town. I did supply you with a bio-sheet on the company, and also, they have assisted Union Bridge with some additional grants, and they've had a huge success with them. I feel that this is a... This is a situation where we can link on to, but I feel that we have to get the community support, and we have to get the community on board, not only with the viewpoints of the mayor and the council and the planning and zoning people, but also the viewpoints of the different organizations throughout the town, so we can open that door for grant opportunities for everyone. So I'm asking... That's basically an action item, to bring that group on board. Let's see. Moving along, we'll go ahead into the April Public Works Report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for April. We do have pressure monitors placed on various fire hydrants throughout the town, and that's in regards to the water study. The water study status, hydroterror will have code change recommendations by the end of May, the end of this month. We did flush the fire hydrant in the dead-end blow-off also on April the 24th. The Park Avenue Water Storage Tank was inspected on April the 30th. We have no results there forthcoming on that. And I'm happy to report that the Manchester Valley High School Pumping Station is approximately 50 percent complete. Moving ahead into wastewater, we had inspections done on both cranes, one at the wastewater plant and one at the spray irrigation facilities. We haven't gotten any reports back yet on those. And we also had inspection done on our storage tank at the wastewater treatment plant. NPDS and stormwater, it was reported at the WRCC meeting that the stormwater fee task force has met numerous times over the last several months in regards to setting the fees by July, by the July 1, 2013 deadline. Recommendation from our chair at the WRCC that the mayors and the commissioners may want to set up a meeting to discuss recommendations that the task force comes back with. I've supplied you all with an update from Brenda Denny, and I've also spoke to Mayor Warner in regards to meeting with the commissioners, and he's willing to do that. Under maintenance roads and parks, we had a request at the last meeting in reference to the police department signs on Main Street. I did contact state highways. The signs that were on Main Street that you folks had seen that actually pointed the people to go in the wrong way in a one-way alley were grandfathered in when we did the Main Street improvements. Unfortunately, now, those signs are illegal, and state highways don't use those anymore. They don't use them. So what we did, I asked permission to remove those signs. We're in the process of replacing them at York Street and Long Lane to give the citizens a better idea, to point them in a direction on Long Lane to get them back to the back of the police station on that. Under the skate park additions, we have no change on that. Spring Fest was held on Sunday, May 1, and that was a huge success. And we have another action item, and that's the reservicing bids, which I've given you a memo from our Director of Public Works on that. I'll talk a little bit about that. We received two bids, one from Bollinger and Brooks, and the other from GSB Asphalt. And you can see the totals. There was a difference in a total from GSB, and a call was made to the firm, and the... They basically said that it was the cost of the asphalt. And they rechecked all their numbers. All their numbers were correct. We have done work with both firms before. Bollinger and Brooks is a local firm. We've had very good success with them in the past, and staff is recommending to go with Bollinger and Brooks for $134,875. And you can see down at the bottom that our budget figure for fiscal year 13 started out $238,762. We did some sealing on the other streets, and we have $181,303 to complete the project, so it's well under budget. So that's an action item. I believe that's it.
So I think we had two action items, Steve, if I'm correct. And one was the task force, which I'm on board with, and we'll get that going.
Yes. That was bringing on DAT. That would be Jarrett Shoemaker, assisted by Jim Shoemaker.
Okay.
Do we have an idea, Steve, of what their services cost? I mean, what's the...
Yes. Originally, when we met down, when we sat down and met with them, and I have to get that cleared up for sure, I was under the impression that it was $50 an hour. In an email, actually, each person is $50 an hour. So I'm going to limit that down to one of the principals, just one, and use one. So you're looking at 50 bucks an hour.
And do we have an idea of how long it takes them to help us write a grant? I mean...
First of all, the theory behind it is, once we get the task force together, and we get everybody in the room, we would come up with approximately 30 or 40 items that we want to shoot for. And probably, a couple of things that come to my mind is, you know, do we... Capital expenses on water and wastewater. So zero in on those, expand off of that. Coming back to that, a lot of the grants that you can get, and Councilperson Black can assist me on this, a lot of the grant money that you get can go to pay for your grant writer.
There are limitations to that. You have to be, I guess, careful with that. But the point is, the investment that we as a town would set aside as a budgetary item well is... Covers itself through what is gained through the capital or whatever target. So you're not actually using grant monies to pay the grant writer. You're instead budgeting it.
Correct.
And you are gaining so much more. I mean, the potential is hundreds and hundreds of times fold of what you're paying for somebody. And I can personally testify to that success, so.
Right.
It's out there. It's possible. You know, grant funds are out there for everybody. It's just a matter of having somebody who can target it and can write it well and tell the story.
And when we started working on the sustainable community application, our staff and our staffs here, Michelle Water, Kelly Baldwin, and myself, it's pretty overwhelming. I mean, we have to get all of our thoughts together. And it's not only staff's thoughts, it's coming from the community, coming from the merchants association, coming from the nonprofits, coming from the landlords. What can we do? And that's... That can open the door to a lot of different opportunities for the town. So I agree with what Councilperson Black said. You know, it outweighs, you know, the cost of the...
The thing, too, and to Steve's point about having this task force, you can't get, you know, the cart before the horse and this kind of thing. You really have to have a task force, target what your efforts are, because grants just kind of... They're like a ship sailing by. And if you don't jump on the ship, it just passes you by. And you don't know when they're going to hit, what's going to be a target, what foundation, what state entity, who's going to be putting out monies when. So it's important that you identify them. You don't change your mission to fit into the scope of a grant. Rather, you develop what you want to do, and then it's already developed, and you just fit it. And generally with these things, usually, once your template's formed, it's just a replicative process.
Correct.
And you're spending much less on repeat efforts.
Correct. And I've taken notice of that. We downloaded some other towns and cities that have done that, and yeah, I mean, it's basically, once you get the template in place, you're set. But coming back to that, I mean, there's just so many grants that I feel that we're missing out. Grants that could assist the Fire Department, grants that could assist our Police Department, you know? So it's a community effort, and that's why we want to bring this group together and do it as a community effort, so.
Okay.
I have a question, Steve.
Yes.
Who would the grant writer report to when they come in to do their...
That would probably be myself or Kelly. Yes.
So you guys would be providing the day-to-day oversight, so to speak?
Correct. Yes. Correct.
And you're comfortable with the $50 an hour?
I am. Yes, I am.
For one?
Yes. I would go with one. Yes.
Need a motion?
I think we need a motion to move forward with that.
I make a motion we move forward with the creation of a task force and contracting with the MAP to assist with our grant writing.
I second the motion.
Motion in the second. Another discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's going to work out real well. We also have a... An action item here with the repaving bids. You should have a copy in front of you. The staff recommendation is to go with the Brooks, or Bollinger and Brooks, for $134,875. Any motion there any?
I'll make a motion to reapprove the bid from Bollinger and Brooks for $134,875.
And I will second that motion.
Motion in the second for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
Anything else for us, Steve?
No, sir. I believe that's it.
Any other questions?
Two questions. On the Michelle Road and Bachman, isn't there still a stop... A stop sign on Bachman?
Coming south.
Yeah, coming south?
Yes. There's none...
Or going north, rather, down the hill.
No, it's going up the hill.
No.
No.
It's going down the hill?
There's... Yeah, there's two stop signs. One at Michelle Road, on Michelle Road.
All right, that's right. Because we decided not to put it because of icy conditions, so, okay.
Yeah, it's going down the hill.
Gotcha. I was at the wrong place. The other question is the pumping station. When's the expected completion?
Completion date, I believe, is scheduled sometime around July, middle of July.
July.
Or the operations.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I owe you something.
What's that?
I said I owe you something.
Yes, correct. We have a few weeks there, yes. Correct.
Anything else for Steve?
Okay. Next on our business is discussion of ordinance 212 relating to the fiscal year 14 budget. Again, this was introduced in April. Kelly did prepare a summary sheet, which everybody should have now. Mine has cycled to the bottom here. Essentially, you know, highlights from this are that the tax rate, the water rate, and sewer rate, all stayed the same. So to echo some of the things that we said last month, thank you to Kelly, Steve, the department heads, everybody sitting up here, and many others that participated in this process, that each year seems like it's an increasingly difficult task to squeeze everything that we really feel like we need to do in, while, you know, maintaining, you know, the tax rate as low as possible. There are years that we've, you know, had to increase one or the other. This year, we were able to keep everything the same through use of increased efficiencies, looking for, you know, other ways, like Steve mentioned earlier, that we do have a grant to update some equipment, and then we, you know, did use some savings, so. As we are, Kelly would like to provide a highlight on some of the budgetary items.
What I thought I could do is give you, mention some of the capital projects that we plan on purchasing in the general fund. We're looking to update the heating and air conditioning system, or the furnace here, as well as replace some of the chairs and tables. We do have monies budgeted in the current year to do upgrades in this office with the carpeting and so forth. Most likely, we're going to have to encumber that, because I don't see us getting that done before June. So it'll be a combination of everything. In addition, we are looking to put cameras at the pavilions at Christmas Street Park and all five pavilions. And then, we're looking to do street repairs on Bachman, Blakely, Moorfield, Keating, Sutton, and Wilhelm. Those are the roads that we have set up in our five-year capital project to be maintained. Now, in the water fund and sewer fund, we are looking... We're going to continue with our pump replacement. We are going to do some system improvements for the valve and hydrants and loops. We are scheduled to paint the Park Avenue tank, which is... Was a big ticket item. It's about 75 grand. We are looking to update the weather station at the spray fields and continue with the vehicle replacement, and that will be a utility truck. And make some improvements to some of the buildings. Our South Pump Station will get a floor and different things for that specific site. So those are the highlights of the, what I call, the big-ticket items. If you have any questions on the details, as far as, you know, pump and motor replacement, Steve would be able to handle that for you. That's not my area. That's what I have.
Anybody have any questions for Kelly? Comments? All right, well, I think we are ready to vote on this. We had an introduction last month, public hearing today, and it's now up for discussion and vote.
I'll make a motion to reapprove the budget as it's been presented tonight.
I'm in the motion.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. We have a budget, and we can keep doing business.
Shut it down.
Yeah, it's...
Sequester.
We don't... We don't have all those options that they threaten to do at the national level. Fortunately, we have to keep doing business. We inadvertently skipped over here the police report, so I'll give the police report for tonight. April, for April, there were 78 calls for service, seven criminal arrests, five adult, two juvenile. Broke down to destruction of property, theft, bad checks, and failure to appear. Also, just an update on a couple of the areas in town. I mean, Westminster Street and Washington Way, where we had some previous citizen complaints about speeding and stop sign violations. The police did do some increased enforcement in those areas over the last month. Had a total of 59 either written warnings or citations. So they will continue to work in those areas as well as other places, but if there are places in town that are, you know, particularly bad and are not on our radar for some reason, we definitely want to know about it.
Mayor Warner, I have something for the council. Officer Seleski and I had spoken... Mayor Warner, I have something for the council. Officer Seleski and I had spoken over the last several weeks. As you well know, we have a two thousand four Dodge Intrepid that has actually not been used for service over the last year. I basically asked him, you know, look, you know, this vehicle, even though it's not being run, is costing its money, and it has some mechanical issues. I said, do you need this as part of your fleet? And he said, no. So the auxiliary police, they actually took all the electronics out of it, and I would like permission from the mayor and the council to go ahead and sell that vehicle back there.
To?
Two thousand four.
Sell it to who? Or you're just going to set?
Yes, it would be set out normally like we do our trucks, yes.
Okay.
Need a motion for that, or?
It's probably cleaner.
Make a motion that we sell the two thousand four Intrepid.
I'll second that one.
Very good, thank you.
Motion seconded, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we are down to questions, comments from the community. Anybody sign up, Tracy?
Yep.
Anybody signed up? We have some people here tonight. Would anybody like to address? If you don't mind coming up, stating a name, where you're from.
My name's Dave Dicey. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to y'all rate if I could have dialogue with Mr. Pacelli.
Public?
Public.
I, I mean, it's questions and comments from the community. If it's, I mean, I'm okay with it if.
It's been an issue that the council's dealing with, the future council's going to deal with. And, I mean, I'm not going to ask him any controversial, I think it's pre-printed here, and pretty much answer no questions. I mean, he possesses some unique experience. I mean, he was a Baltimore City Lieutenant, he transferred to another law enforcement agency.
So I'll say.
I mean, you yourself have said in the past that, you know, the whole police world's, you know, a little one familiar to you, you're not part of it, haven't. And I, I mean, I appreciate that.
Right.
Mr. Pacelli has.
I'll, I'll say this, you can.
I mean, if I say something inappropriate, interrupt me. Interrupt me outside.
If this is about the chief's job, I can't.
There's nothing directly, I have no question. I'm not asking you to comment about the candidate, you know, the controversy, or anything like that. I'm asking.
I'll, I'll say this.
I want you to talk about your experience in law enforcement.
I'll, I'll say this, and Councilman Pacelli, if you don't want to answer questions, you don't have to answer questions.
I feel this is an unusual venue for this.
It is, it is, and Dave, I'll say this, it is unusual. It's certainly catching me off guard, and I'm sure it's catching Councilman Pacelli off guard. If you have something that you'd like to say, I mean, you certainly can do it, but I don't want to turn this into a forum that, you know, is kind of like, you know, you've prepared something and somebody else is unprepared. So.
All right, let me make another statement. I'm not going to say anyone's going to perish it. I'll tell you that right up front. I mean, the questions are going to be answered, they're very easy.
Well, I wouldn't have a problem meeting you in private over this.
Yeah.
I don't think this is the right, like I said, this isn't the right venue. I have no idea where we're going.
Do you know who the questions are?
No, I don't. But I do know that you're a candidate for the police chief's position.
Right.
And so am I. Thus, I feel that this is an odd thing to do. So I'm going to deny your request. I'll be more than happy to meet with you on the outside.
I think that's probably appropriate. I mean, I don't think, the police chief position is something that we, you know, we select and vet, you know, basically in private, it's a personnel matter, and then the appointment and this, the nomination, the appointment, and the confirmation is public.
I'll just, I'll just make one more comment, if I may. Since becoming a candidate, I've had no conversations with anybody in the, on the town council about my candidacy. None.
I don't want to talk to you about your candidacy. I don't want to talk to you about my candidacy. I want to talk about general law enforcement questions.
Well, that's not what we're here for today. This is a town council meeting. We can have that conversation in private.
There's candidates for council that are probably watching this, maybe here tonight. I mean, I think this could benefit.
All right, I, I think we're, Dave, and I don't mean disrespect, but I think we're going to move on. If you'd like to submit questions, because Vince is neither running for town council, we're not tackling the police chief nomination tonight. And I don't think he wants to answer questions, so I don't want to get this, you know, to go any further. So if you'd like to.
That would preclude me from answering questions of you?
You can ask.
Or Mr. Mayor, I can ask some other questions.
You can ask a question if you'd like to ask a question. You know, and then we may or may not tackle them and.
All right, well, if I ask anything you don't want to answer, you don't have to answer it. Fair enough.
Okay.
All right. I got one question from Mrs. Black. Let's say you're sitting on the council here, and two people from the community come up, and to this microphone like I am here, and they have opposing views on an issue. One person brings an entourage of people with them in the room, the other person comes by themselves. Which one's correct?
I think it needs to, you know, require some research beyond the initial presentation.
Fair enough. He took history in school, I'm sure. I mean, there's examples of ulterior district people filing, so rational people are correct. Mr. Mayor, about the recording equipment, everything that's been said here tonight's being recorded?
That's correct.
And every meeting's recorded?
That is correct.
And how long are these recordings retained?
I'd have to, I'd have to refer to the Director of Finance for that, but we probably have recordings back as.
Before I got here.
Yes.
A couple years ago.
For several years.
Yes, yes.
Between BHS and now EBD.
Right.
So if anyone wanted to go back and look at previous meetings and see what was said, that's available to you now?
That's correct, yes.
So if someone came to up this microphone at the previous meetings and made false statements, these would be on the record?
They would be on the record, yes.
And if a person attacked a good person's character and reputation, attacked a respected member in the community, someone they didn't even know, never said two words to, that would be on the record also?
That is correct.
Can I say something real quick? Mr. Dicey, just like the air conditioning's one right now, sometimes that does affect the quality of the recording. Just so you're aware.
So we have, we have what we have.
Sometimes if you don't speak to the mic, there's certain things, if you don't speak directly to the mic, probably like I'm doing now, some things go in and out. So just keep that out there.
Mr. Mayor, just some questions. If I was allowed to talk to Mr. Pacelli, I would have been asking if police officers should be honest, fair, impartial, and persons of integrity and good character. That would probably be true, I guess.
I would agree with that statement.
Wouldn't these also be good characteristics of the town council member?
I would think so.
What are the requirements to run for town council?
My understanding of the requirements of town council is that you're here for a year.
No, in order to run.
Right.
What do you need to do?
You're a town resident.
You're a town resident for at least a year.
Town resident, anything else?
I believe, is there an age?
Understood voter.
As a voter?
So they're doing background check on all these people that run for town council? They deal with a multi-million dollar budget? They deal with issues that impact the quality of life here in Town Manchester?
Those are all true statements.
So since there's no background check on all these people, it's up to the citizens of the community to do their own research on the character and ability of those running for council?
That's the way the representative democracy works.
So, speaking hypothetically here, a candidate for town office could be a pretty unscrupulous person.
I believe that's happened in the United States before.
And speaking hypothetically, it could be an accomplished liar?
They may have even been in the Oval Office before.
Pardon me? I didn't hear you.
Somebody with those characteristics may have even risen to the office of president in our history.
Yes. But such a person probably shouldn't even run for council, right?
Well, that's probably a loaded question. That's a loaded question. I, you know, I don't know how to answer that.
Okay. All right, so if such a person got elected, and evidence surfaced at a later date, that they were a habitual liar, and made untrue, untrue and malicious character assassinations against individuals, how would they be removed from town council?
I'd have to refer to our charter if we have a removal. In the fourteen years that I've been here, we haven't moved to remove somebody that's, you know, I think.
I know it doesn't happen every day.
Right, and I think, except in the most egregious cases, it would fly in the face of a representative democracy for the majority to constantly try to remove the minority opinions. And.
But there are, there are impeachment proceedings at the federal level.
There are.
You know, in the state government. I mean, is there anything existing in Town Manchester to remove such a person?
You know, I don't know. We may have one, it hasn't come up.
Okay. I mean, would you be opposed to researching that, maybe talking about it in the next meeting?
We can probably research it in the next thirty seconds.
I don't need to write anything.
It would be in the charter.
We're obvious.
I, I don't know. I mean, and Dave, I don't mean disrespect, this, I think if you have a point that you'd like to get to, let's, let's get to it. Is there somebody you believe should be removed?
I think I got that. Somebody should be removed?
I mean, is that what you're getting to?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. There's something that may happen in the future.
Okay. All right, well, we'll see if we can get you an answer by the end of the meeting on that. It's available online, too, is where I generally go to research code and charter things. We have links that are constantly updated to both the code and the charter.
All right, that's all. Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
C three.
Anybody else?
Talk about the removal of a county.
Okay. We will move on to committee reports. Planning and zoning, Doug?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank all the citizens who have supported me over the past four years. Bit of pleasure serving and representing them. Couple of things off to the side here. I guess, you know, in my mind, you know, we've had, there's been disagreements, and I don't have a problem with disagreements. I think that disagreements brings out different viewpoints. I don't think disagreements are personal. I don't think disagreements are whether I like or dislike or anything like that. I've been with my wife for thirty-three years, and I'm sure we've had some disagreements, and I still love her, so, you know, it has nothing to do with likes and dislikes, you know. When I was Director of Public Works for Carroll County, I had a lot of people who didn't always agree with me and had disagreements. And when I left that position, actually ran for county commissioner, the same people were some of my strongest supporters. So, once again, you know, because we disagreed or whatever, didn't have anything to do with person, personality, or likes or dislikes. I just want, you know, I think, like I say, it gives opportunity to see different viewpoints, is what it does. After, oh, going back to the planning and zoning, we didn't have a meeting last month. And this month's meeting will not be on the scheduled Tuesday because of the election. It'll be on Monday, the twentieth. Give me a thumbs up to tell everybody. Monday, the twentieth, at seven thirty, instead of Tuesday night, will be our planning and zoning commission. After last month's meeting, that next day on Wednesday, I called the chairperson for the Board of Elections, or the Supervisor of Board of Elections, I think it's called, and told her to remove my name from the ballot. And she told me at that time that, you know, it would probably be best if I did it in writing. So I did prepare a letter, but my printer wasn't working, so I didn't get the letter to her until that Friday. And I hand-carried it and dropped it off at her house and told her. So, you know, I'm officially off the ballot. I don't control how people vote. They have the right to vote however they want to. You know, anybody can vote for anybody. So I'm just putting that out there, that, you know, there is a right in place, and I'm not controlling that, so it doesn't mean, you know. I did everything I was supposed to do, okay. I wanted to clear up two other points from the meeting last month. It was made a comment, and these are not correct, and I want to go on the record that these are not factual. It was said that every week I have something personal to say about what a person does. I went back and played the tapes for February and March, and on both of those meetings, I asked that person one question in February, one question in March, and they were not, nothing to do with personal issues. So just want to clear that up. That's incorrect. They also said that I ride by their house every day and check who's there and where they park. That's not correct. That's wrong. I have family who live back there, and I do go past that person's house. So be it. I have to, there's only one way to go in and out, and I have to go past that person's house. If I see a car there, I see a car there. It's just the luck, whatever, you know, it's nothing, I'm not going out there joyriding, looking to see if a police car's sitting there or if a car's sitting out on the street. So I don't go riding by and just looking for things like that. So I want to clear that up also. I think that's everything I've got.
Okay. Tammy?
I just wanted to piggyback on Steve's comment that the Spring Fest for the Charles Quest Nature Center was a huge success this year. And in some, they had about six hundred and twenty people there. I think it's probably their biggest year yet. And so for all who went out, thank you for supporting it. And just know that the nature center is open as a, as a park, as an extension of the towns park system, and folks can go there really at any time. But the actual programs that are offered are posted on their website, and would encourage everybody to take advantage of them. Many of them are free or extremely low cost, so, thank you.
Very good. Vince?
Surprisingly, I have a few things to report. We did have a meeting last, last week. We haven't met since last November in regard to the Cable Regulatory Commission. For those of you who have cable, you may have noticed a small increase. There was a small rate adjustment in March. Comcast has partnered with the Boys and Girls Clubs in Westminster for various projects around McDaniel College. To date, they've had about two hundred and seventy volunteers. Comcast is expanding their internet service with regard to homeschoolers. Also YouTube, if you go to YouTube and search Xfinity instructional videos, there are instructional videos there on how to hook up different pieces of equipment. I thought that was a neat idea. Contract negotiations are still going on. The current contract has been extended to December thirty-first of this year. From what they're telling us, negotiations are going well. The problem has been a delay in scheduling meetings with all parties, because a lot of things are going on. But there is progress being made, and apparently they are expanding service. I don't have cable, so I'm unable to take advantage of it, but apparently things are going very well.
Is FIA is ever going to come out here?
I don't know. When they hold a meeting in six months, ask them.
We need competition.
If I could, if I could jump in there and piggyback on both Councilperson's Black report and Councilperson Pacelli's report, because it kind of intermingles. One of our employees come up with a fantastic idea, and I'm going to research this and see if it'll work out. I want to see how much it would cost to install free Wi-Fi up in the Christmas Tree Park area. We have a lot of students that go up there and study. We have a lot of parents that visit the ballfields up there. So I'm going to do some checking through Comcast, and also I have another provider that actually uses some of our water storage tank space for their internet service. So one of our employees brought that idea back to me, and I really like that idea. So we're going to check into that, so.
It is a good idea.
We'll live close enough to Christmas Tree Park to support that, Steve.
Well.
I have nothing to report, but I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure serving the town in this capacity. It's been a pleasure working with everyone up here and the town staff. It's been a pleasure working with everyone up here and, and the town staff. I'll echo what Mr. Riley said about our staff. You know, this is a very part-time position up here compared to the amount of effort that they put in. And they, I mean, I was talking to Mr. Riley, our one-page summary of our budget, it just doesn't seem fair that all the work that went into that budget can fit on one page for us all to digest that easily. There's a lot of efforts that go on that, for everyone's behalf, and I really appreciate those efforts. I really think that small government is a, you know, is where we really get to see democracy in action. I think that you see people who actually care, and, and they are concerned over every dollar that's spent. That's, that's something that gives me a little bit of hope for maybe big government. You can take a note from our, our playbook there, but it, it has been a pleasure, and I've, I've learned a lot in this position, and, and maybe in the future, I'll circle back around, but it's, it's been fun.
It happens.
That's right.
And last but not least, Mr. Riley.
My last report. We only have one thing on the water, and that's the pumping station, and unfortunately, it never got finished.
No, I didn't meet my promise to you, I tried, but I didn't meet them, so.
Anyway, Steve usually gives my report, but I don't. Most things we're working on now is through the county, and, and it's really important that the, that the town really works with the county on these, on this water, or whatever you want to call it. And so, I just wanted to pass that along to you, it's extremely important, so. And I, I want to thank the citizens for allowing me to be around as long as I have been, and when a reporter called me from the, from the, the paper, and wanted to know if I was gonna run, and I said no. And he said, well, how did you campaign, what did you ever do to get elected? I said, I never spent one cent on anything. In one election, I was in Myrtle Beach, the election day, and I had somebody call me in Myrtle Beach, so. I don't run a very good campaign. But I have been elected several times, so I'd like to thank all the residents for allowing me to be here, and I have expressed my appreciation to the staff and the employees, and the rest of the council members. Thank you.
Thanks again, Dan. Alright, anything else? Alright, motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, all's in favor, say aye.